Of allegiance and please stand and join us if you will.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this community, for all that live and work here. Would ask thy blessings upon those that protect us, both here and abroad. Look over everyone and bless this country, all of these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. On tonight's agenda, we have site plans which are not, public comment is not allowed on site plan, so I will not go over the meeting procedures for tonight. Are there any planning commission announcements? None, okay. So, our first business item is to approve the minutes of our meeting held on January, or excuse me, July 2nd, 2019. Commissioners?
A motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet. Thank you. Alright, our first site plan tonight is, if I can get there. SP 3960 Cabana Court, 4559 Highway 17 North. Parcel ID is 03-00450, 9.01 acres. The existing zoning is mobile home park. Jim Porch for Laurel Cabana Court LLC applicant and owner. Mr. Postal.
Good evening, Maurice Postal, Planning and Zoning Division. The applicant for this project is asking for a site plan approval for the addition of 15 new spaces to an existing mobile home park. The Cabana Court Mobile Home Park is long existing. It was around at the enactment of the zoning ordinance and the property has been zoned, mobile home park, since then. Cabana Court is surrounded by a mobile home park on one side, an FA Zone subdivision which is essentially a mobile home park on another side. The Brunswick McBride Industrial Park is on the third side and US 17 bounds the other side. You can see that here on the zoning map. Here's the, here's one mobile home park. Here's the Brunswick McBride Industrial Park. Here's the FA Zone subdivision and Highway 17 over here. And here is the site plan that you reviewed in your agenda packets. And these are the new 15 spaces. And this is the existing mobile home park down here. And your possible motions, of course, are to approve, approve with conditions, defer, or to deny the site plan. And we are recommending approval as presented.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant please come forward and request action?
I am Jim Porch.
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
And I guess I'm requesting approval.
Thank you, sir.
Good enough, alright.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant?
I've got a question, but it may be more for the engineer, actually. And I was just wondering, the lots that are farther away from the Golden Shores North down there, lots 15, 14 and all, those are going to be, what, low pressure pumps that pump to the manhole to the north?
Chris Amos would see SEC. We're still working on that, that, as you know, the, or you probably can see from the plan, where the whole, this whole project started because of a sewer issue out there. So the new road that's shown is to get sewer from Golden Shores and Cabana Court across the Development Authority parcel, which we already have an easement for, and into the county sewers or the joint water sister sewer system. There are several other lots in there that we're going to provide sewer to. I don't know whether it's going to be low pressure. It's probably going to be gravity. We've done a gravity system layout for the whole thing and I believe that we're going to go with gravity sewer for those new lots.
Okay. How about the existing lots? Any of them, any plans to put any of those over?
Not at the current time, although the system is being designed so that it can be extended to the future to every single home out there. But obviously with all of the water and sewer impact fees and there's a private water system out there now, which is functioning perfectly well, and all of the existing our own septic tanks. So I suspect it's going to be as septic tank repairs need to be made. This project is going to put all of the park within the range where they're not going to issue any more repair permits. So as they have septic tank problems, we'll have to extend and connect the sewer to those homes as well.
Does each lot have a septic tank?
I believe that, did each, does each lot have a septic tank? I'm not sure about that.
This is such an old park that right now, each home, each, two homes connects into one septic tank that goes into one drainage field. So, this is really being done so that we have the capability to put everything on sewer because it's old. It's old infrastructure and it's going to have to happen at some point in time.
So the new lots, are they going to have septic for two lots?
No, the, the new lots will all be on public sewer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the DPH or whoever controls septic tanks wouldn't, would not allow us to do more on septic.
Okay, any further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application SP 3960 as presented.
Well, second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve SP 3960 as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet. Thank you. Next site plan is SP 4056 Golden Isles Collision, 301 Candler Drive. Parcel ID is 03-12704, 1.04 acres. The existing zoning is planned development, Lon and Donald Morales applicants and owners. Ms. Leaf?
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is site plan SP 4056. This is for Golden Isles Collision, which should be a new auto repair business. The property is currently vacant, since this would be a new building and new infrastructure on the property. And they are proposing a 7,500 square foot building. They are in the Southport Plan Development, so the Southport Plan Development text does allow a repair garage, except those which involve open yard storage of junk, salvage, used automotive equipment, parts and materials. And they have stated they do not plan to do any of that. Everything would be contained within, within their building. And this is the property here. This is Candler Drive. And where the star is located is the currently vacant property where they propose the building. This is the site plan that, so there was a site plan that was in your packet. There was one that was emailed to you later yesterday that did have one revision on it. And so where the red circle is, is where the revision, this is the only revision to the plan. The plan that had been included in the packet had shown a location for a pylon sign that was not 10 feet away from the property line. And the sign code does require a 10-foot setback for a pylon sign. If they were to do a monument sign, they could do three feet back from the property line. And we would verify all of that when the sign permit was submitted. But it's a good idea, of course, how the site plan reflect the correct code. So they did submit a revision and this is what was emailed to you and then this is what's on the screen as well.
Okay.
And then these are the building elevations for the proposed building. And your motions are to approve, to approve with conditions, defer, or deny the site plan. And staff's recommendation is to approve it as, as presented, which is the site plan that you have before you today. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the applicants are here as well.
Great. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Is this, is, is this is going to be a collision repair? In other words, a car is wrecked and it's, they're going to take it in to fix it?
That is my understanding, would be the nature of the business and I know the applicants can talk a little bit more about their business plans.
But, and they don't plan to have any, an open yard for used automotive parts or junk or salvage? I've never seen a collision center because of the necessity to hold vehicles because of insurance formalities and insurance claims, et cetera, et cetera. That at some point in time, the wrecked and junked cars kind of take over the property. How are they going to eliminate this or?
Sure.
Deal with this issue?
That's a very good question. That was definitely a question staff had as well because you can drive around any community and see some places are kept a little neater than others, depending on how the, how the business is run. So that was definitely a concern because of PD text is specific that, about that. So I had asked that of, of the applicant's representative and they said they do not, they plan to adhere to the PD text. And if we do see that there are issues, I mean, that would definitely be a code enforcement that we would enforce if they're not holding up to the zoning requirements.
Okay, I'm sure the applicant can address that when they come forward. Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant please come forward and request action?
Good evening, I'm Pete Schoenauer with Tide Water Engineering and this is one of the owners, Lonnie Morales. Oh, thank you. So we'll answer, we'll try to answer any questions. I guess the big question right now is about the, the portion of the zoning text which says repair garage is permitted except for those which involve the open yard storage of junk, salvage, used automotive equipment, parts and materials. And this is not going to be a junkyard or a salvage yard where they're selling used parts off of wrecked cars. They're bringing cars in that the owner has every intention of it being repaired, so there might be.
And I understand that, but every car can't be repaired. You bring cars in today and the way they're built, they're totaled.
Occasionally they're, they're temporarily stored.
He's waiting to get the insurance claim and everything, so the car is going to have to sit somewhere where they're trying to work out the details of this.
That would be a temporary situation, but it's not a, a permanent, you know, landmark.
How temporary are you talking?
Typically, you know, if you get a totaled out car, they may be there two weeks.
And from there, I guess they would go to a salvage yard from there.
They get picked up by a salvage company and hauled off.
Or go to a bidder or something.
But Stephanie, does, does this code allow for a two-week storage out in the public?
So when we, we look at junk and salvage, I, I think there, there would have to be an interpretation of whether, whether the vehicle can be repaired. And if it's junk or salvage, I think that, that implies that it cannot be repaired and it needs to be hauled off. So I think sounds like one of the questions is, you know, could it take two weeks to make that call of whether that car would, would stay on and get repaired by Golden Isles Collision? Or whether at two weeks, could it be hauled off as salvage? I think that's a very good question. And I think if there's maybe some parameters that you want to place on that, such as how long a car can sit out there, they may need to possibly make arrangements for cars to be stored elsewhere if they can't be stored on this site. So I think that's something that you could potentially discuss what some options are so that we don't run into the issue of vehicles looking like salvage and they've been sitting there for two weeks before they get hauled off.
I'm not even so worried as much about salvage as I am about cars coming in that are wrecked and are sitting there waiting to be repaired. And once they're brought in, you know, you have to go through the process of, of getting with the insurance company and the adjuster has to come out and look at it, et cetera, et cetera. And then, once the insurance company and the owner decide what they want to do, how they want to handle this particular issue, then parts have to be issued or, or, you know, ordered and repairs have to be done and everything like that. And with all due respect to Mr. Morales, I don't care how fast he is. He can't turn these cars over in two or three days. So at some point in time, he's going to have a bunch of cars sitting potentially on this site. Is that not?
Well, cars will be coming in and out, yes, sir. Majority would be stored inside. I'm not going to say that we won't have one outside occasionally, but, you know, we're not in the storage business.
No, I understand that, sir. I understand. I'm just, I'm just, I guess my point is that if you look at most of the auto body shops around Glen County, they got cars outside because they just don't have room to put them inside. But I would think that, I would think that a vehicle that's in the queue to be repaired is not considered a wrecked car until such time as it's classified as a wrecked car and totaled. And at that point in time, they would have to be taking the vehicle off-site. But as long as it's in their queue for repairs, it might take two or three days or maybe a couple of weeks to get the parts in. I don't think that's unreasonable.
I agree, but, but, but that's, I think that's part of the normal scope of work. And as long as there is a process that, that this gentleman and his business are following, if it takes a month to get insurance claims or get parts and get it repaired, that's part of his normal scope of business and he's entitled to that.
As long as you don't stack them up and then wait. And that's, that's my.
Our goal is to keep them neat and clean.
Right, that's my concern is that, you know, after you've been in business for two or three months, a year, et cetera, et cetera, all of a sudden now, you've got a bunch of cars sitting out there that are totaled and you're still waiting to get insurance adjustments and things like that on them, so. How about a fence screening on the fence or? You're talking about a buffer, a buffer? Well, there is a vegetative buffer that's required on the front already, so. But I can, I know of some new car dealerships that have several old cars that have been there for years waiting, I guess, collectible or you can't find parts. But it is the nature of the beast with an auto repair, though, you're going to have cars that need repair there, hopefully.
Yeah, and my, and my concern was that, that we make sure we're clear on this so that somebody doesn't come behind what we do and say, you're violating, you're violating this, this particular rule. So that, that's why I ask how temporary.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, when they talked about the, the fence and the buffer, I know their plans do show a chain link fence. It's kind of hard to see on the screen, but there's a chain link fence that runs along here. And then they do have the type E buffer along the front. But, you know, what could be an option is to look at, you know, opaque wood fence that would truly screen, you know, the temporary holding area from the public. That might be an option instead of the chain link, if you want to consider some things that might help kind of buffer that holding area.
Another thing that I want to look at is, is Jeff Emmerton, you know, Justin, Chris, because they've got the chain link fence, but he's got, I don't know what you call it.
Screen.
The screens all the way around.
Integrated into the fence.
You know, so the public can't see what's in there, so just a thought.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application SP 4056 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve SP 4056 as presented. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see the fence slats go into the chain link fence, just to add some, some visual buffers.
As a condition.
If, if the owner would consider that.
Commissioner Neville, can you change your motion?
Is, is that a, across like the? Just the front to screen it from people driving by? You're talking about all the way around or just the front?
Typically where it's visible from, from the street.
So across the front?
Yeah.
Basically?
If, if the owner would be willing to consider that.
Okay, well, I'll concede to that. So, motion to approve, plus the screening along the fence along the frontage with the right-of-way or parallel with it.
Your second still good, Mr. Strickland?
Yes, sir, still good.
We have a motion and a second with modified condition for SP 4056. Are any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next site plan is SP 4057 Sappolo Equipment, 110 Peak Road and 4380 US Highway 17. Parcel IDs three, excuse me, 03-00415 and 03-05565. 2.37 acres, currently zoned highway commercial. Mickey Brook, or Brock, rather, Sappolo Equipment applicant and owner. Mr. Postal.
The applicant is requesting site plan approval for the addition of an existing 3,240 square foot metal building to an existing farm sales business. The background on this application is that the applicant sought a simple electrical permit for the building and building inspection staff discovered that the building was never permitted and it was, did not appear on any previous site plan. And the applicant and the present, who was the present owner, bought the property back in 2017 and didn't know. Here's the zoning map. Although it's two parcels, but it is one zoning lot. This is the site plan. This is the building down here that they were seeking the electrical permit on. This is Highway 17 over here. There's a residential lot right here and this is a highway commercial lot and this is another highway commercial lot. And these are new drawings of the building that they were seeking the electrical permit on. And there are a number of right-of-way issues, as you may have seen in the site plan. The first one is that the parking spaces, the most northern parking spaces along Peak Road encroach into the county right-of-way for Peak Road. About 40% of the length of each of those spaces is in the county right-of-way and of course, 60% on the private property. The applicant has applied for an encroachment agreement from the county and that is scheduled to go before the August 15th Board of Commissioners meeting. And the business's main driveway encroaches into the G dot right-of-way for 17. Let me show you. Right here, this is their main driveway and this is a lot of it in the G dot right-of-way. And both cases of encroachment were caused by the property's previous owner and were existing at the time of purchase by Sappolo Equipment Company. And another issue is that a portion of the site southwestern section will be acquired by G dot for a US widening in the near future. And that's this entire area right here. It's about four tenths of an acre, so the business will still have a two-acre lot when US 17 is widened. And this is the diagram from the encroachment agreement showing the portions of the parking spaces right here that are in the county right-of-way and the county will grant a parking license. The county can revoke the agreement, but they have to give the applicant 180 days' notice. The county and any utility has the right to work in those spaces at any time and the applicant has to remove and replace the encroachment at their own cost. And the county attorney's office put a stipulation in there that the county will not revoke any building permit or site plan that's relying on this encroachment. any building permit or site plan that's relying on this encroachment agreement for meeting minimum parking requirements. But of course, in the future, if they come for a new site plan or new building permit, they would have to find those spaces again somewhere. And your options are to approve, approve with conditions, defer, deny. And we're recommending that you approve application SP 4057 with the two following conditions. The site plan will not take effect until the Board of Commissioners have approved the encroachment agreement for the parking spaces on Peak Road and the buffer requirements along the public right-of-way will be waived due to the impending county and state actions.
This may be a dumb question, but since the building was, was built without site plan approval and without a building permit, I assume that the county has determined that the building applies to all applicable codes?
Oh, of course, right.
It's up to date?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. When I was looking at this and reading the report, I had to work to determine which building we were talking about. Right. And I'm just saying that, you know, if we said the existing metal building on these, you know, is all...
Right, the other buildings are metal too.
Right, I figured it out, but it was just, just a little bit of extra work was all.
It took me a while to figure out whether it was a new building that we're adding to an existing building.
Right, yeah.
So what I understand is an existing building is being asked to be approved right now.
Right, exactly. It's a 10-plus-year-old building, no one knows exactly.
Has the county approved the encroachment agreements?
Not yet.
No, that'll be next week.
Next week.
After the fact.
Right, that's why I put the condition in here that this site plan won't take effect until the commission approves the encroachment agreement.
What's the probability that it'll be approved?
I can't say. You can never say with an elected board.
Okay. Any further questions for staff?
No, but whoever, whoever got this thing sure got him a miss.
Yes. So is the applicant present?
Yes, the applicant is present.
Could you please come forward and request action? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Mickey Brock and, of course, I'd like to say it approved with the conditions that have been submitted.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
When did you find out it was not an approved structure?
We found out when the electrician tried to get a permit for the building.
And there was no building?
There's a walk building. And we, the building's been there for about eight years, is my understanding. And it's in excellent condition. It's a concrete slab metal building, but it's never been used for anything, so...
And Mr. Brock, I'm Sherri Gibbs. When you, when you purchased the property, did you, did you have a survey that disclosed all these encroachments?
Well, the only, the only encroachment that we have is, is in the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
And we did have. And actually, I didn't pick up on that and our attorneys didn't pick up on it until DOT came along and told us about it. So DOT, as y'all know, are in the process of getting ready to widen 17 in that area and so we've been going around and around with DOT also on this. And we will have to revise that parking lot when DOT comes in because there's going to be super elevation on that highway and Peak Road's going to be picked up about five or six feet in that area. So they're going to need part of that as a construction easement where the parking lot is.
Yes, sir, the oil.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application SP 4057, subject to the following conditions. The site plan will not take effect until the Board of Commissioners has approved an encroachment agreement for the parking spaces on Peak Road and that the buffer requirement along public right-of-ways will be waived due to the impending county and state actions.
One second. We have a motion and a second to approve SP 4057 with conditions. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, we're zipping through these guys.
Keep going.
SP 4058, Woodard Storage Site Plan Revision, 571 Martin Palmer Drive, parcel ID 03-12690, 2.22 acres. Current zoning is Plan Development, Southport. Applicant Chuck Woodard for Woodard Storage LLC, owner and applicant. Mr. Postal.
The applicant is requesting a revision to a previously approved site plan that you approved less than a year ago to allow for the construction of a new 520-square-foot steel carport. Commission approved the site plan back in December and that site plan allowed for the construction of an open-sided pole barn. And this is the location of the lot on Martin Palmer Drive. This is the site plan. This is the previously approved pole barn right here and this is the carport that Mr. Woodard liked to construct. And it's a picture of a typical open-ended carport. And we're recommending approval of the application as presented.
You know, at every one of our meetings, somebody always says it, so I'm going to do it on this one. Man, it sure would be nice to have staff to have a little latitude to approve something like this.
I don't see why it came before.
So would the applicant please come forward and request action?
My name is Bert Etheridge. I'm representing Woodard Construction and I would like to see if it would be okay if you ought to entertain a motion to approve this site plan and a carport.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
There's a lot to this. This might be, this is a hardy. This one's hard, boy.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP 4058, Woodard Storage Revision.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve SP 4058 as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Etheridge.
See you, Bert.
SP 4063, Cookson Roofing, 440 Martin Palmer Drive, parcel ID 03-12660, 2.01 acres, currently zoned PD, Plan Development. Stephen C. Cookson, Cookson Roofing, applicant and owner. Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is SP 4063 for Cookson Roofing and this is currently an undeveloped parcel and they are doing a new commercial building. It would be the headquarters and office for Cookson Roofing Company. It's a new 8,400-square-foot building. And this is the location. This is Martin Palmer Drive right here and where the star is located is the property. And as you can see, it is, there's commercial adjacent to it as well as across Martin Palmer, but there's a residential subdivision that it backs up to. So these are the, these are the building elevations for the building. This is a survey of the property. And then this is the site plan. And they are showing a type E buffer along Martin Palmer. They do have a type A buffer that would go along the rear of the property that would buffer the residential area from, from this building. They do have a parking area as well as a building that would have the offices and storage for the roofing company. And these are your partial motions and staff recommends approval. And I, let's see, yes, we do have the applicant's representative here if you have any questions. I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
No, sir. I know you talked about a buffer going between the subdivision and the back of the facility. Can you elaborate on what kind of a buffer that would be? Would it be fenced or vegetation or all the above?
Sure. So it is a type A buffer and there's a few different varieties of type A buffer that, that they could do. In some cases, we do leave it up to them to decide, but if there is a specific one that the MPC would like to see them do. So basically what you have is either 40 feet of pure vegetation, so it would just be landscaping within 40 feet, or you could have a 20-foot buffer where you would have an opaque fence or a wall as well as landscaping. So the, if you have a 20-foot, there's a couple of different ways they could do it. They could have the fence or wall set back 20 feet from the property line and then they could have just landscaping on the side of it. The other option is to do the landscape wall or fence along the property line and then the landscaping would be on their side of the property. Or like I said, they could do 40 feet of just pure landscaping. So if there's a...
What are they proposing?
They, they did not propose anything specific. They just said type A, so it would really be their choice of what they wanted to end up doing, but Mr. Amos May, maybe he'll comment a little bit further about that.
This is a pretty heavily wooded, including across the back. And there's also a 40-foot buffer on the subdivision behind it that joins up to this, so it's going to be...
On the subdivision side?
Yeah.
Okay. We've, we've had issues where commercial stuff is going right beside a residential area and there's, and the buffer, when it first starts, it's, it's got some vegetation, but it doesn't do much good until, until it matures.
And Commissioner Lee, if I can make a correction, on the site plan, they are indicating a 20-foot type A buffer. So the 20-foot would have a fence or wall, either 20 feet setback or on the property line with the landscaping. So they, they are not proposing the 40 feet of just landscaping on their property.
Any further questions for staff? Would the applicant please come forward and request action?
Chris Amos with CSEC Incorporated, here to represent Mr. Cookson, who is out of town. And I'm here to answer any questions and ask that you approve the application as submitted.
Mr. Amos, not to step on any other commissioner's toes that maybe have started this conversation, but one of the areas that I had highlighted on my report, I'm glad that, that Ms. Leaf did confirm that it's a 20-foot buffer is what their type A buffer, what they're...
Yes, that is what's on the plan.
I'm wondering if that 54-inch oak can't be preserved with this 20-feet buffer? I guess my question is, will that, will that oak be disturbed?
Let me look at my site plan real quick.
There is a, there is a 54-inch oak tree on this property and, and a couple 24-inch...
Actually, it's an oak cluster, a group of oaks.
Okay.
That are back there. There's three of them, two tens and a 14-inch, but yeah, it's a good size.
I don't see any reason why it can't be. I, I can't really, I didn't, Mr. Cookson and I did not discuss that when we were looking at the site plan. That area behind the building is going to be cleared and have a improved surface put in so vehicles can turn around and maneuver behind the building, but he doesn't have any plans for that part of the, for the rear. So I certainly will present that to him and ask him if we can preserve those trees.
Yeah, obviously, he's not held to that, but it would be nice to see that happen, so...
Maybe he can put a picnic table out there for the employees to have lunch breaks at.
There you go.
Smoke break, yeah.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I got a quick question. You show a privacy fence going all the way around it and I noticed on the, what would be the right-hand side of the lot or left as you're looking at it on the drawing and on the rear, there's a, looks like a double fence or is that still just a single fence?
There's an existing fence there. You talking about on the northerly side?
Yeah.
The left-hand side of the site?
Yes.
There's an existing fence there and he's going to put another fence up on his property.
Okay.
So I guess we will have two fences on that.
What type of fence?
I think he's just planning on putting up a chain link fence. This is just to, to secure that area back there so people can't get in behind the warehouse. There's also a, and we're seeing a drainage easement that's shown on the easterly side of the property that the county has asked him to provide to help resolve a drainage situation in the neighborhood. And he is, at, at the moment, he's intending to, to grant that easement to the county.
Any further questions for the applicant? If not, I will, thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Sure. I move to approve application SP 4063 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve SP 4063 as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet? Thank you. Oh, let's see. SP 4082, Comfort Inn and Suites renovation, 15, is it Wamek?
Wamak?
Court, 03-06311, 1.5 acres. Current zoning is freeway commercial. Hari Krishna Maharaj Incorporated. Kalpech Patel, president, applicant and owner. Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is SP 4082 and this is a renovation and extensive remodel of, of an existing hotel. The total building size, including the addition they're planning, is 23,200 square feet. So the addition they're planning is 872 square feet. So this is the property. It was, it's existing hotel building. It was formerly a travel lodge and it's been vacant for a number of years. It has not been utilized as a hotel. And so the applicant's planning the remodel and renovation and a rebranding to Comfort Inn and Suites. This is a photo of what the property looks like currently. So this is on side elevation. It shows their existing pylon sign. And in this area at exit 36, there's some other hotels that are getting renovated and remodeled, so it'll be a nice addition to see this occur as well on this property. So this is the site plan. There was a site plan included in your packet that we discovered there were a couple errors in the final one that had been sent to staff and that was included in your packet. So there was a new one that was emailed out to you this morning and the new revised one is shown on the screen tonight. So I just wanted to point out what has changed. So in the version that was in your packet, somehow the, the actual building footprint had, had shifted when the architect had done it. It was actually showing that it was going over a property line and that's of course not correct. It is meeting the building setback. So where this blue arrow at the bottom of the screen is showing, this shows that the building is meeting the building setback. And then there, there was some information missing from what the architect, I think, had access to. There is an existing detention pond on the property that is heavily overgrown. It was, staff hadn't noticed it on the site and the architect wasn't aware of it, but we became aware of it and so they did add this area to, to this site plan. So that's what's shown with this arrow. And just to show you, this is the existing building and this is where they are remodeling the entry and then adding to the entry lobby area. And this, so this is the addition. These are the proposed elevations when they remodeled the building. And here are your motions and staff is recommending approving the site plan as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have and I know the applicants are here as well to answer any questions.
This is just to add a lobby is all on the front.
Correct.
And a little...
Right. Yeah, that, that is exactly what, what is triggering the site plan is the addition of the lobby was just over the 5%. If it would have been under 5% of the building footprint, it would have been approved administratively. It was just over, so that's why you're seeing it tonight.
Okay. Stephanie, can you put the picture back up of the...
The photo?
The building, yeah, the building itself. I have yet to figure out where this is at.
It's behind, was it, was it Captain?
Next door to Captain Joe's.
Captain Joe's, okay.
It's behind Captain Joe's?
Yeah.
Or it's alongside Captain, no, that's, that's a more...
Like from 341, let's see, so from 341, it would be, because I think this would be the Captain Joe's property, is that right?
That's correct.
So it'd be, yeah, I guess behind it if you're on 341.
I thought that was a Ramada Inn behind it.
Yeah, and that's the same one.
That's the same one? It used to be a Ramada Inn, now it's something else?
No, it's not. No, it's a property. They're probably...
Okay, so it used to be a Ramada Inn. I got you. Now I know where it's at.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Is the staff satisfied with all of the changes and corrections that were made to the site plan?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Would the applicant please come forward and request action? Please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kalpech Patel. I'm the owner of yours. And yes, of course, I mean, I would like to have it, you know, whatever, just to grant the permits. the permits as presented.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I'll clean up an area when he gets it done.
Yeah.
It'll look much nicer.
Okay. Thank you, sir. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application SP 4082 as presented on the revised drawing.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve SP 4082 in its revised form. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Our last item, well, site plan item. SP 4083 Old Times Country Buffet, 112 Center Drive, 03-27082, the parcel ID, 3.88 acres. Current zoning is highway commercial. Mike Sumner for PAO Properties, applicant and owner.
Yeah, the applicant appears to have forgotten to show up.
Okay.
So can we continue or how do we proceed?
Officially, the owner doesn't need to be here to request action for a site plan. And I would entertain a motion to defer or-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve it.
I agree. It's some, it's so minor that, and it's already installed, I believe.
Yes.
And I've had a bunch there today and it's a great place to be.
Okay.
I think we should proceed with the review.
So we have a motion and a second to approve SP 4083 as presented. Any discussion?
He needs to present it.
I'm sorry?
I don't think he's presented it yet.
Am I getting ahead of myself?
No, yeah. I haven't presented it at all.
We are zipping along so quick, I just, forgive me, guys.
I cut you off.
Keep going.
The applicant's requesting approval of the addition of an existing 1,757 square-foot canopy to the existing old times building. And as mentioned before, the canopy is existing. What happened was this summer, the contractor brought in revised plans that included the canopy and of course, building inspection staff noticed that it wasn't on the original site plan. So what the county did was have them post a maintenance bond until their site plan was approved tonight. And we issued them a temporary CO and of course, they're open. Here's the location, along Golden Isles Parkway. This is the site plan. And this is the canopy right here. This shows the canopy back here and back here. Of course, uh-
So the canopy exists now though, doesn't it?
Yeah, it exists. It's there right now. So we're requesting approval of the application as presented.
Any questions for staff?
I guess my comment's going to be the same as I had before when they said the canopy. When I drove by it, I was thinking it was the front canopy they had over it. And then when I saw the one in the rear, I kind of clued in a little bit.
It's the rear one.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, so the applicant is not here to request action, but we are going to move forward, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP 4083 Old Times Country Buffet site plan.
One second.
Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve SP 4083 as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet. Thank you, Mr. Postal. All right, so now our last agenda item is for a public comment policy discussion regarding public comment for the Mainland Planning Commission on site plans. Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. So at the, the Planning Commission's joint Planning Commission that the IPC and MPC held on June 5th, one of the topics of conversation was a public comment policy. The Islands Planning Commission has had a comment policy for a number of years and the MPC suggested that it would be a good topic of discussion for the MPC to have, if that's something that you, you all may want to implement in the future as well. So we did add it to this agenda as a discussion topic. And so I think the goal here is to have some discussion and then provide some direction to, back to staff and then staff can draft a policy for your review at the September meeting. And so I did include a copy of the IPC's public comment policy. And as you can see, in addition to, as we know, anything that's required by our ordinance to have a public hearing, of course, has public comment in front of the commission. But the IPC also takes public comment on site plans and village preservation applications. The policy also refers to preliminary plats as well, but preliminary plats no longer go in front of the planning commissions. So with that, I just wanted to kind of introduce that topic and if you want to have a discussion about your feelings about potentially starting to take public comment on site plans and other matters that are not public hearings, and then we can move forward or not move forward if you don't want to do anything, so. Go ahead.
Commissioners, I, I'm in favor of a public comment policy. So I'll put that out there. One thing that I would like to address specifically or a couple of things, and Ms. Leaf did bring reference to it, in reading through the Islands Planning Commission policy, we, we need to remove the reference to preliminary plats. And I would also suggest that we change the language with regard to gender to make it more appropriately aligned with the new bylaws changes where it says chairman, change the word to chair. And then I guess I, I would like to pose a question to this panel. If we adopt a public comment policy, will we allow public comment at joint meetings? Because currently it is not, we do not allow that. The reason for that, if I remember correctly, and Mr. Neville, please correct me, the way I remember it is that we didn't allow public comment for joint meetings because the MPC did not have a public comment policy in place.
Are you talking about work sessions, Mr. Chair?
No, it would be joint meetings of, the occasional joint meeting of planning commissions.
When were there, I think, approving like ordinances and things like that?
And the code revision that is upcoming, that would be a joint called meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, Gary's been on this, on the panel since Moses was here, probably. Maybe not quite that long. Has the, was there a reason to not allow public comment in site plans or was that just carried forward and never changed?
Yes, basically, the second, but after seeing some of the public comment that went on at the IPC several times, it's, I don't want to say the same suspects usually that were complaining, but a lot of times, they do a little bit harder to try and find reasons not to approve something that may be more develop, more development to the island. But you get a lot of people also that say, I don't like it. They may not understand 619 site plan requirements on there, but they can't cite anything specific that says, you know, that they're not meeting setback requirements or something like that, which the staff already knows. But I would like to just still have it as the chairman's prerogative. I think usually when we have a site plan that comes up, that it may be controversial, there's, that's usually in the wind beforehand and that's something that the, you know, chairman could allow for. We've done it in the past, sometimes before and sometimes after the vote.
And I would, I would have no issue with that as long as we don't have the same issue that we had at the last meeting where people don't come because they're told by staff that we do not allow public comment.
And that's the only problem I have with that, with what Gary proposed. If you, if you start handpicking, people aren't going to know whether to show up or not to, you know, if they're going to be able to make input. And I, I'm, I agree with the chairman. I'm, I'm in favor of it because it's really the only chance that the public gets to weigh in. And sometimes the public comes up with things that maybe were overlooked by staff or the planning commission themselves. And it just gives the public an opportunity and, and, you know, it's, provides some transparency and some openness to the, to the whole process. And so I'm, I'm certainly in favor of it. I have a question for Ms. Leaf and I, I think this may have been addressed with Will Worley, that, but the public comment section has to be the same as it is for a public hearing. In other words, it's 30 minutes for and 30 minutes against. And I'm just thinking, gee whiz, when we have an agenda like tonight, you're going to get some people that will still complain that they don't want it, is all. So, and like I said, if it does meet all the requirements for a site plan approval, I'm not talking about putting an asphalt plant next to a subdivision or something like that, that, those type things. But the whole save German Village and things like that that went through, although that didn't go for site plan approval, I don't think, did it?
Well, for instance, like tonight, we had the roofing companies' storage facility going on. If we had allowed public comments, maybe some of those neighbors behind them may have come in with a clarification as to what protection they were going to get from an industrial complex being in my backyard.
And, and I think that's a valid point. I, and to me, that's the number one concern. It, it at least gives the adjoining property owners the opportunity to ask questions of the owner prior to approval. So I think that's a very good point.
I totally disagree with what Gary's saying if we, but I think we should announce that early on, the ones that perhaps might be controversial, we, you know.
How are you going to know?
I don't know.
You don't know until you get here and we've got, you know, people sitting all over the place because something that we didn't, and let me tell you something, what we don't suspect is controversial, or somebody else does.
Oh, yeah.
It gets on social media or something and all of a sudden, you know, now we got a room full of people and they're expected to be able to make comments or whatever and they're not allowing it.
I don't want us to be accused of picketing choosing, so.
Well, if the comments could be, and this is where it's going to be education for the public, that is specific to site plan approval and those items on there, coming up and saying, you know, gee whiz, it's a metal building, we, you know, gee, that's not going to look good in our neighborhood. And, but it meets the requirements for site plan approval. If it's a legitimate, you know, they know something about the property, we don't, that sort of thing. And obviously, there's not title work that's required for site plan approval, but-
Maybe we could add that verbiage to the meeting procedures that comments need to be specific to that site plan.
Good luck with that.
Well, and then it would be up to the chairman to-
Enforce it.
Enforce it, right?
Yeah, I, I agree with what you say, Gary, because we don't want to open, we don't want to open up to what we all have seen at the IPC.
Mm-hmm.
And, and yet I wonder how we know which ones are going to be controversial.
That's a good point.
You know, that's, and we heard that last time when we were here, so do we have to decide tonight?
No, no, no. I think ultimately what this is, is a, is a way for staff to prepare a draft of a policy and then hopefully, we've got a full panel at our next meeting to vote on that.
I would certainly encourage to have a full panel when we vote.
And I would, but I would also ask that we can go ahead and move forward with the members that are here tonight and ask the staff to go ahead and draft a policy so that, you know, we can, next meeting in September, we can bring it before the full commission and everybody will be here and then it can go before the board of commissioners.
Will that require a public hearing prior to or would that meeting be the public hearing?
My understanding, and I'll double check with our county attorney's office, but I do not believe it would be a public hearing either, it would not be a public hearing before the MPC, it would not be a public hearing in front of the board of commissioners, but it does require board of commissioner final approval. So I, my understanding is similar to the bylaws and that's how the bylaws-
And it has to be approved by the IPC also?
Uh, well, that's a good question. So we, it could be separate, if it's just the MPC's policy, then it would just be the MPC that would review it. If we want to look at having one policy that would serve both commissions, then we would need to also take that in front of the IPC for their review as well.
The IPC already does.
Yeah, they've already got their policy.
They already, yeah, they already have one, so I think what I had in mind was there would be something separate for the mainland, but we could have it as one.
It's an ordinance revision, correct?
It is not. It's, it's a standalone policy. Yeah.
Just a policy.
Yeah, it's just a policy. So if, you know, if you, if that's something you, you want to consider is having one policy that serves both commissions, you know, we can definitely talk about that. The only thing is if anything changes, you know, that, the MPC may want to do something a little bit different. I mean, like in terms of talking about the, the timeframes, you know, right now, the public hearing procedure is 30 minutes for, 30 minutes against. I mean, what you, you all may want to look at is maybe it's less time, but then you could extend it if it is an application that is extremely controversial. Because right now, you know, the way it reads in our public hearing handbook or policy is that they could request of the chair additional time or the board could extend the time if they feel like they need more comment to make their decision. So there's some options there.
We could, if we wish, set specific time limits. In other words, let's say that we want to, and the board decided 15 minutes per side with the approach for comments, you know, for our against. So we could, we could set that in our specific policy for the MPC?
That, that is correct. You have, you have a lot more flexibility because it's not a legal requirement to have comment at all. So just the fact that you're allowing some comment is above and beyond, you know, what the code ordinances require, so, yeah.
And then if, if it was something really controversial, which very rarely happens in this county, then the chairman could extend the period if the commission desires.
Right. Yeah, that could be written into the policy so that the public would know in advance that, hey, we know we get our 15 minutes, but we could ask the chair and there's a potential that we could get more time. So that would allow the public to know what's going on.
I like that option. It, it was, there are some that would take the entire 30 minutes just because. So I do like that option. So is that, you can draft a policy and then we can amend that policy at the meeting based on the timeframe that we determine is best.
Right. And that's, and I'll, I'll run it by our county attorney's office just to make sure, you know, we cover all our bases. And then the other thing on that too, we allow five minutes per person right now unless they specifically request 15 minutes. Do you feel that's, that's plenty or would you even want to look at less than that or is five?
Both sides, yeah.
Fine. Yeah.
Yeah, I like the five.
Five, okay.
Grace is funny.
Anything else on the public comment policy? Before we close, Commissioner Neville recognized Mr. Wildsmith last week and I'd just like to recognize Mr. Walter Rafowski. He, he gives a lot to this county and we thank you for everything you do and thank you for coming to our meetings.
That's back to y'all too. I know that is. You had German food or something.
I'm sure. I'm glad you were on that end and not me. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
You know, he's-